Several special things here this evening, but we always like to begin with the pledge of allegiance, so we'll ask our VFW members, Commander Van Hooij, to come down and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Joe. If you all please be seated. At this time, we'll ask that you join us in a moment of silence. You can use this time for silent prayer, reflection on the meeting, or however you choose to prepare. All right, thank you very men- very much. Council members, you all have the minutes from January 25th. Do we have any changes that need to be made, or is there a motion to approve as submitted?
Send it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I know we have some folks joining us here in the audience this evening, and I wanted to explain the next couple of sections of our meeting. Citizen comments on public matters, anyone is welcome to talk about anything related to what's going on in the general public, going on with the city of Radford, things along that line. For those that are here especially for the special use permit and the rezoning request, we're going to have public hearing time later in the meeting for that. The citizen comment time is limited to three minutes or less, and we'll ask that you come down, use the podium and the microphone, state your name for the record. The joint public hearing time, which we'll have later in the meeting, is not limited on time, but we will ask that you be briefed during that time. So hopefully that clears it up, and we will open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. Please come on down to the podium, use the microphone. Seeing no one make a mad dash for the microphone, we will go on and close the citizen comment on public matters section of the meeting. And we do have two special proclamations to read this evening. February is recognized nationally as Black History Month here in America to reflect on the achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our nation. We have a proclamation here, and Jesse Foster has that for us.
Black History Month 2025, African Americans and Labor. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the 2025 theme is African Americans and Labor, is a powerful reflection on the pivotal role that the hard work of African Americans has played in shaping our country's history. And whereas Black History Month 2025 aims to celebrate and honor the- those profound contributions, shedding light on how work, both historically and present day, continues to shape the identity, culture, and economic status of our communities. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas. And whereas the city of Radford continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the city of Radford is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Radford City Council that February 2025 be known as Black History Month and celebrate, and all citizens are encouraged to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much, and I hope you have a chance to visit the wonderful exhibit at Glencoe Mansion regarding the African American experience immediately following the Civil War through Reconstruction in the early part of the 20th century. It was a wonderful panel discussion that was held as part of the kickoff of that exhibit last week here in council chambers, and some really fantastic stories from folks about their local experience. We also have a wonderful event to celebrate. It is the 25th anniversary of the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam. This is a institution that began in downtown Radford and has been held in churches, parks, and businesses for the last quarter century. We do have our founder of the Fiddle and Banjo Jam, Ralph Berry, here with us this evening, and I have a proclamation that I would like to share. City of Radford Proclamation, Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam 25th Anniversary. Whereas the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam started on February 7th, 2000, in a downtown restaurant called Chili Peppers, and whereas the jam was nomadic in the first few months before settling in at Joe's Diner and Mocha Joe's Coffee Shop for the first few years, and whereas, over the years, the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam has been hosted in several businesses, churches, and public parks, including but not limited to BT's, The Coffee Mill, Radford Coffee Company, River City Grill, Wade's Kitchen, Sweet and Savory Donuts and Bagels, Carter, United, Methodist Church, Carson's Courtyard, and the Triangle Plaza. And whereas, since the fall of 2024, the jam has been hosted in the Bee and Butter Restaurant on top of the Highlander Hotel, and whereas, the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam has helped foster good music fellowship and has been a part of the development of local talented young musicians, including Avery Davis, Addie Levy, and Hollis Oaks. And whereas, the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam was awarded affiliate status of the Crooked Road, Virginia's music heritage trail, beginning in 2012, and whereas, the group The Java Brothers was formed out of the jam and have played together across the region for about 15 years. Whereas, the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam welcomes all to attend and enjoy the music. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Radford that the Radford Fiddle and Banjo Jam is hereby recognized for 25 years of jamming in Radford, and all are called to celebrate in this monumental anniversary. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Ralph, would you come on down front? And I think that deserves a round of applause for 25 years of good music. Congratulations. Thank you, my friend. You are welcome to say some words to the assembled masses if you'd like, use our mic and podium over here so folks can hear. Thank you, sir.
Or play a song.
Yeah, I was going to say, where's your-
Sing it.
Let my music speak for me, yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, city administration, citizens of Radford, thank you all very much for this proclamation that recognizes the 25th anniversary of the Fiddle and Banjo Jam here in Radford. A jam that almost didn't make it the first two months, let alone 25 years, but- but here we are. I would like to thank you, not only on behalf of myself, but on behalf of my friends who are playing music, who have played at the jam for years, and who cannot be here right now because it's Monday night. That's when the jam happens. They're playing music over at the hotel right now. I would also like to thank the businesses, the many businesses, Mr. Mayor, that you mentioned that have hosted this jam over the years, and especially those places where we played the longest over the years, such as The Coffee Mill, River City Grill, and we hope that the hotel ends up being a wonderful host for the jam. And most of all, though, I would like to thank my friends, the performers who come to the jam every Monday night and who play music not only for themselves, but for the people who come to listen, and people who come from far and near to participate in it. If you've never been to the jam, it's a wonderful thing. It's a lot of fun, and especially now that it's at the hotel, which is a restaurant, you can come have a meal, you can listen, you can play if you want to, you can have a drink. The people of this jam, most of us would have never known each other if not for this jam. And not only have we become friends, but we're more like a family, who found that all these people from different backgrounds can make wonderful, beautiful, harmonious music together. It's just a great thing, and I really appreciate the recognition from city council tonight. And I got to go play music because it's Monday night.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
And it truly is a wonderful program, so many great people. It is fantastic to have it in Radford, and I encourage everyone to go check it out. If you have not, if you have, you know how wonderful it is, and hopefully we'll have even more musicians from Radford and the surrounding area that develop through the program. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ralph. Here's hoping for another 25 years. We'll see you on the 50th. Okay, it is now time for us to move to our joint public hearings, and before we move any further, I'm going to ask that the Chair of the Planning Commission open the Planning Commission portion of the meeting. All right, thank you very much. I'll just explain a little bit about what a public hearing is for, and we'll talk a little bit about these. We are going to flip the order that is listed on your agenda and talk about the rezoning request for 901 Eighth Street first. A joint public hearing is an opportunity for members of the Planning Commission and council to hear from you, the public, about proposed developments, changes, opportunities, and things happening in the city of Radford. No action will be taken during the course of this meeting. This is really information gathering. We are here to listen, and then also Jenny Webb, who is our clerk of council, has a list so that we can get your name and information in case additional follow-up is needed. So be sure to sign in with her if you would. For this joint public hearing, we'll ask that those interested in talking about the specific areas, come down front, use the microphone at the podium, state your name for the record. And while we don't have a time limit, we hope that you will keep your comments fairly concise, explain what you would like to share with us, and let us know what's happening. Before we get going, I will begin by talking a little bit about our rezoning request at 901 Eighth Street. Braim Family Properties LLC applied for the rezoning on the property known as 901 Eighth Street, tax maps number 14-5 SEC 1267, 14-5 SEC 128. And the request is to rezone from a portion of R3 Single Family Residential to B1 Limited Business, and a portion from B1 Limited Business to R3 Residential Single Family Residential. And Melissa Skelton, who coordinates this for us, is going to share a little information. So Melissa, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
My apologies.
You're fine, and thank you. Take your time.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council and planning commission. We've got a couple, we're going to separate, do one public hearing, and then I'll come back and do an overview on the next prior to the second public hearing, if that's okay with you all this evening. The first, as you shared, is a rezoning request from Braim Family Properties. They're located at 901 Eighth Street. This lot consists- this parcel consists of three lots, 14, 5, 12, 6, 7, and 8, consisting of 22,500 square feet. Current use is a formal general store and existing apartments. The zoning currently is split. It has B1 Limited Business and R3 Single Family Residential. Future land use has it allocated as a medium-density residential district. On December 3rd is when they applied for this application request. This request will bring the existing B1 portion into compliance, and then the remainder of the property will be developed into two single-family dwelling units. Here is an overview of the current zoning. You see B1, it's on the corner of Taylor and Eighth Street. You see the B1 highlighted in the darker orange, and then the surrounding is all R3 Residential. As I shared earlier, a corner of the existing building overlaps into the R3 zoning district as split zoning. I went out, got a picture off of GIS and/or off of Google Earth just to show you what the existing use is. They have done some modifications as they are updating the existing building. Some of the standards, a B1 standard, there's no minimum lot size or lot width for that area. When you have B1 adjacent to residential uses, you do have a front setback of 20 feet, side setbacks of 6 feet, and a rear setback of 25 feet. Within a R3 Single Family, the minimum square footage is 6,000 square feet for a single-family dwelling, a 50-foot frontage, and then front and rear setbacks of 20 feet with a 6-foot side setback unless it's on a corner lot, then it would have to be a 15-foot. Pardon me. This is their proposed, actually, let me just go back a little bit, I apologize. Looking at- looking at the standards, the intent of these districts, I'll highlight it a little bit out of our zoning ordinance. Section 121-39 of the R3 Single Family District is to provide appropriate areas of moderate density, single-family residential development, together with certain other housing types with a suitable residential environment. The districts are designed to preserve the character of existing residential area and to encourage a range of housing opportunities. Division 9 of the B1 Limited Business District, Section 120.1-84, intent is to accommodate a limited range of low-intensity retail, personal service, and office use that's compatible with adjacent residential areas. What they are- what they are requesting, as I had shared, to rezone 1,347 square feet that's identified adjacent to Lot A8. If you see Lot 8, you see the hash marks. That is 1,347 square feet that they would like that's currently zoned R3 and would like to rezone it to B1 to incorporate the existing B1 building into that and to make it compliant. North of Lot 8, you see the hash marks that is currently B1, and they're requesting that 3,500 square feet to be rezoned to R3. These are three existing lots. What they're going to do, they're going to realign the lots, lot line revisions, and they're going to, the two lots, Lot 6 and Lot 7, will be developed into single-family residential dwellings. January 22nd, planning commission reviewed the request and requested this joint public hearing with you this evening. Public hearings have been duly advertised, and if you have any other further questions before opening up for public hearing, I would be happy to speak on behalf.
Thank you. Council members, do you all have any questions?
What do they- do they know what they're going to do with Lot 8? Seven is single fam-
Going to do a limited business, as long as it meets that downstairs will be, the main level will be the limited business, and then there's existing apartments upstairs and below that they're renovating.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Melissa, thank you so much. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for those here to speak on the rezoning request for 901 Eighth Street. As I said, please come down to the podium, state your name for the record, use the microphone so we all can hear you, and while there is no time limit, if you can keep your comments concise, we appreciate it. So the public hearing for 901 Eighth Street is now open. Okay, seeing no one come forward for the public hearing for 901 Eighth Street, we will go on and close that public hearing, and Melissa, the floor is yours once again, as we begin the process for the special use permit for 2016 Fourth Street.
Thank you, just making notes on that. Okay, our second public hearing this evening is a request for a duplex at 2016 Fourth Street. My office received an application from Connor Compton on November 25th, 2024, requesting to develop this site into a duplex. The location, as I stated, 2016 Fourth Street, tax map 18-3, section 19, lots 12 and 13, consisting of 15,000 square feet. The current use is a single- was a single-family dwelling, and it has been demolished, since it has been demolished. Current zoning is R3 Single Family Residential. The request is to convert it into a duplex. Future land use is moderate-density residential. Providing you the standards for both single-family dwelling as well as a duplex, for a single-family dwelling within that district, as with, in the previous applicant, is 6,000 square foot, 50-foot frontage, front and rear setbacks of 20 feet, and 6-foot side setbacks unless it's on a corner lot, it is 15-foot. For an R3 duplex with a special use, it is an 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size, 80-foot frontage, rear and- front and rear setbacks are 20 feet with side setback of 15 feet. As I shared earlier, the R3, the intent of the district in R3 is to provide appropriate area for moderate-density, single-family residential development with certain other housing types that are suitable resident, within a suitable resident, residential environment. The district is designed to preserve the character of existing residential area and to encourage a range of housing opportunities. Section 120.141-5 allows for the opportunity to request a special use permit for a duplex. So we have special exceptions during, in parts of our code that provide opportunity to provide different types of development that are appropriate for that district. Here is, if you can see, the green highlighted in the middle, it is, that's the location of the proposed property, of the property, and all the surrounding area is zoned R3. As we creep closer to West Main, there's some multifamily, and then east of that is, we have some more R2 residential. This is prior to the home being demolished, so they are trying, you know, as I said, they are wanting to take it down and develop the duplex. The 15,000-square-foot as is does provide opportunity for them to develop by right two single-family homes. I know there's some concerns about traffic, so regardless if we have a duplex or two single-family homes, there will be two units. It's just a matter of what the type of housing unit that we're providing, or that they're providing. The public hearing has been duly advertised. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to share. And I showed, here's a picture of the proposed, on the, on the right is the proposed duplex, and then, of course, demolished.
Melissa, do you have any idea how many other special use permits for duplex we have in the city?
At this point, none at this point in time. I mean, we have them, probably one or two a year we get requests for duplexes.
Okay, but we've done it. I mean, if we went back, we'd have-
Yes, sir.
All bukus in it.
And, and, and that's where you're looking, when you're looking at zoning, you're looking at transition from low density to high density. Our conservation district and our R1s and R2s are our lower-density districts. R4 is our highest density, which accommodates all our apartments. The R3 density is typically, as we said, the moderate-density style homes where you have a little bit higher density, but not as high as apartments with, that you would find within an R4 district.
So you mentioned a couple of things about the buy-right use of the property, that it, by its nature, that size piece of land with all the setback requirements and space requirements could accommodate two houses regardless on the property if the owner decided to do that.
Correct.
The special use permit is just for basically conjoining those two-
Correct.
-into a single piece.
Yes, sir.
Is there any limitation within the code, as far as we're aware, on the number of folks that can live either in the conjoined property or the separated property?
We don't in any of our single-family residents. I mean, that's just something that we, we monitor. It's all space of the house. The state, state code has requirements and, well, the building code has requirements on how many people can be in a bedroom and such, but we do not limit the amount of people or how many bedrooms. That's really controlled by the size of the property and how big they make that-
Right. But it's not necessarily more in a duplex than it would be in single-family housing.
No.
And are there any parking requirements or any off-street requirements other than the setbacks for single-family or duplex?
For both, it's two per unit.
Right, okay. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted to verify and make sure I understood correctly. Are the setbacks actually more for the duplex than they would be for the two single-family housing as far as being as close to the property lines?
They are. For the duplex, it's, it'd be 15 feet from the property lines, the adjoining properties.
Okay.
And I've spoken, you know, I've spoken with, on, on both properties in terms of all the utilities to make sure that we have adequate utilities to be able to support any of the development, and, and all of our department heads have assured that there's plenty of capacity.
Well, I just wanted to say, I know when I've had residents come up and speak to me about this particular piece, I think what they were worried about is an overpopulation in this particular area, and so what I'm hearing is, either way, it's considered moderate.
Correct.
So we are, we're, I mean, we're just deciding if the houses have a shared wall or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other? Planning Commission, any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Melissa, thank you so much. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the special use permit for 2016 Fourth Street. We'll ask that you come down to the podium, state your name for the record, and use the microphone.
My name's Jimmy Simkins. I live at 1912 Fourth Street, next door to the property. Howdy. I'm here tonight because I'm totally against it for two reasons. If you build two family homes, you have two families that own the property, and they live there. They become part of the community. When you build a duplex, you have two separate individual homes that people can rent, come and go as they choose. The person that bought the property, her son's a student. Next door will be kids, college kids, and everyone in this room knows what's went going on in East Radford with college. We don't want that in our neighborhood. I want my kids to be able to go out and ride their bicycle in the road without being run over by a car. I want my kids to be able to come out of their house without gunfire and guns, drugs. Y'all need to wake up to this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the public hearing?
Well, I might be a little nervous. I just want to say good evening. I want to start off and thank you all for the opportunity to come up here and speak, and Melissa, for all the work you've helped us do. My name is Connor Compton, I'm the owner of the property. I bought this property as a renovation project with the intention of living there. I graduated from Virginia Tech in December last month and plan on moving in there with my fiancee once we got married. As I started the remodel process of the house, I noticed there was a lot of termite and water damage, even to the point of almost caving in. I noted, this is made, this decision for me that we had to tear down the house and do it the right way and build back better to fix the structural and safety issues of the house. This led me to looking at plans to decide what to build back. The lot allows for two houses to be built, but a duplex seemed like a good option for us, and it would have a similar footprint to the pre-existing house. I've already invested a lot of money buying the house, gutting it, tearing it down, and having the trees cut down, and I would like the opportunity to be able to keep investing in this community, and not just for me and my family, but for the rest of Radford citizens. I'm not a developer, and I plan on living on one side of the duplex and staying there. I started a job in Roanoke. I work at an investment firm in Roanoke, and I grew up in Placid County, and I think Radford would be a great place for me and my family to grow and not live in Roanoke City and still be a little, a midway point for me. So I just want to thank y'all for the consideration and the opportunity to come up here and speak for y'all. Thank y'all.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
If I, if I may.
Yeah.
You said that you liked the idea of the duplex better than the two houses. Can you explain what made you more interested in the duplex versus-
Yes, ma'am.
-putting two houses on there?
For me personally, it's more cost-effective for me. For me to be able to do it, and it allows me to, you know, a better investment for me, I'll be straightforward with you, and it allows me to do more of my money.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else care to speak on the 2016 Fourth Street?
Just a quick question. Are you thinking, I know you're living on one side, on the other side, are you looking at selling that? Are you looking at making that a rental property? What is your plan at this point?
I, you know, I have no clue. It's just so early in the process, and like, like Melissa said, I'm either going to build two houses or I'm going to build the duplex, and I just thought more cost-effectively that it would allow me to do that. I don't plan on going anywhere, and I especially don't want anybody living across from me that, or in, living in my own house, that's bad, or, you know, anything like that, so, yeah.
So no- So, no drugs or guns, hopefully?
No. Thank y'all. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Smith. My husband and I live across the street from this property, and we have no objections to the proposed duplex. We do have a couple of concerns, though. One is, will the sewer system accommodate two families? Because now, that big gigantic truck that comes and cleans out the sewer has to arrive several times a year, and when they blow too much pressure in, it, the sewage comes up in the neighbor's basement. So, I'm concerned about, will the sewer system support the families? And the second concern is water runoff. We have a water problem there now. My front porch is usually a little, uh, creek, and with two houses or a large expanse of roof, what is going to happen to all the water that runs off it? Because right now, we have a problem, and if we have a lot of rain and a lot of water to runoff, because our road is not flat, our road is sort of curved, and when it hits that road, it comes right down in our driveway and ultimately on the front porch. And those are our two concerns.
Your house sits lower than the road.
Yes.
Do I remember Nancy?
We live across the street and sort of down the bank.
Yeah.
Right. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before we continue, Melissa, do you, you said that utilities should be able to manage this. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
I did specifically talk to our, um, water wastewater superintendent because they've approached me regarding that backup when they do, um, with the vector. He said there's a, there could be a couple reasons, and some of it being the lines could be root-bound and some of the pressures, so he has talked to me, and we're going to go out and look and, and do some more exploration to see how that can get remediated. In terms of the water runoff, we'll have to investigate that. I'll get with engineering just as he was, anything we can go ahead and do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing for the special-use permit for 2016 Fourth Street?
My name, uh, get up here. My name's Timmy Simkins. I live at 1902 Fourth Street, and, uh, we went around with a petition and got, uh, neighbors to sign it, the ones closest to it, and they said that, that was their concerns too about traffic and everything. It's all real nice. We tried to scan it and send it to you, but for some reason, didn't work, but we will get it done, though.
Well, actually, if you want to give the petition to the clerk, she will get it scanned and sent to all of us, Planning Commission and City Council.
And Mr. Simkins, you're Jimmy, but that was Timmy?
No, I'm Timmy, that's Jimmy.
Oh, okay. I got them backwards. Okay. Jimmy and Timmy, okay.
And thank y'all for answering my email, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on the property at, uh, 2016 Fourth Street?
Hey, I'm Hattie Trill, and I live adjacent to the lot also. Um, I'm not opposed to it in many means, but I am concerned about the sewer, because it is my basement that it backs up into every time the truck comes, unless I can catch them and say, "Don't put so much pressure on it," you know? And as far as I can tell, the sewer is running fine at that time, so, uh, they come, like I said, two to three times a, a year to clean it out, and unless I'm there and watching, the next thing I know, I have sewer in my basement. So, I'd appreciate if they look into it real carefully.
Has this been an ongoing issue for you? I'm asking because I did have sewage in my basement one time as well. I'm up here.
I was, yeah.
So, is, when you're saying that you're, you get backup in, with sewage, have you had that happen more than once?
Just whenever they're pumping it.
So, every time they pump it?
Yes. Unless I catch them and say, "Would you not put so much pressure on it?" And actually, one of the gentlemen came and looked because he thought I wasn't, you know, that it wasn't backing up. He actually came in and looked, and he said, "Yes, you're absolutely right," and I, I thought, "I know what sewer smells like," you know?
Thank you for sharing that with us, and, and to those who spoke to that, I think we're going to explore that regardless of whatever decision is made here. We're going to see what can be done. The Vector's a wonderful tool, but that shouldn't be the main reason that we're coming back out there all the time.
Right.
If this is something we need to go and check about some roots or other things, we can do that.
Right, because like I said, it seems to be working at that time, so, and of course, it may not be further out the street.
So, for those that might be listening, Ryan, the, the Chair of the Planning Commission, asked what's the history of the Vector coming out, and how long has the backup been going on?
I would say at least a couple of years or more, maybe longer than that, that they've been coming and doing it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Well, now, well, now that we're aware of that
We will get a check.
Council members, we, we're going to follow up and see what's going on with that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
We can come up with a good solution there, regardless. All right. Would anyone else like to speak about 2016 Fourth Street? Anyone else? Okay. Uh, seeing no one else, we will go on and close the joint public hearing for the special-use permit for 2016 Fourth Street. Uh, are there any comments or anything before we close the Planning Commission portion of the meeting? Okay, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to close the Planning Commission portion of the meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, uh, what will happen now is, we will go back and list all these concerns. A Planning Commission will meet, and then we'll have further discussion from there. So, thank you all very much for coming out. Thanks to everybody who participated in the process. We will officially close the joint public hearing. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, Council, we have an appointment, uh, to New River Community Action. We have a vacancy on the board that's needed to be filled, and, uh, I believe we have a nomination. Jesse, did you have someone you wanted to recommend?
Yes, Jenny Reif, and I believe, did she send a letter in?
She, uh... Yes, she sent an email requesting information, said she was interested in that position.
Okay, we're going to pause for just a moment. Folks, for, for, for those who are staying in the meeting, if you all wouldn't mind moving out to the lobby, we want you to be able to continue your dis, your discussion, but we want everybody to be able to hear the meeting. So, if you all are, you are welcome to stay in the lobby and have further discussion. We just need to continue the meeting in here. Okay. Would you repeat what you stated, Jenny?
Yes, uh, Ms. Reif reached out to me with interest in that commission, and then I also received confirmation from Community Action that Ms. Ray's appointment, that she was vacating her seat, and we needed a appointment on that.
Okay, so we have confirmation that Ms. Reif is interested, Ms. Ray is leaving the, the board appointment. Are there any other nominations for New River Community Action? Do we have a nomination in a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a nomination in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Jenny Reif. We appreciate your service. Um, Chantel Cable has requested of the city that we extend their franchise agreement. They are working right now to expand their footprint in the city of Radford with fiber, and they've asked that their franchise agreement be extended. We need a public hearing before we can make a decision on that, and Council, we could accommodate that at the March 10th meeting if so desired. Is there a motion that we do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we will see everybody at March, on March 10th to talk about Chantel Cable's franchise agreement. Also, under, uh, new business, we do have appropriation ordinance 1802.2 for poll print systems. The City Office of Elections received grant funds to purchase a poll print, a ballot-on-demand system ahead of the 2024 general election. Um, that, uh, is that correct? On that date, is that the 2025 election?
No.
No, it was for 2020.
They actually already purchased those.
Already been purchased.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we just have to approve the, the money for it then. Okay. Uh, the $8,615 is from the Virginia Department of Lecture, uh, Elections, and will go into the General Registrar's Voting Equipment Budget. Council members, do we have a motion to approve the 8615 for the poll print system?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion that we do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we have a lot going on in the city of Radford, and we'll turn the floor over to our interim city manager. What do you have for us this evening, Mr. Meadows?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. We do have a lot going on in the city of Radford right now. Uh, one of the things we spent time on today is preparing for another winter storm. Uh, we're going to experience probably a couple of inches of snow along with some ice, uh, tomorrow and Wednesday. As a result of that, we are delaying, uh, opening of city offices in the morning till 10:00 a.m., subject to change depending on what the weather presents us in the morning. Also, the rec center and library are currently delayed until 11:00 a.m. Again, we will, we will see what the weather holds tomorrow. You know, um, during my career, I've always taken closing facilities very seriously because I know that, uh, we're here to serve the citizens, but we also want to make absolutely sure that our citizens are safe when they're out and about using our facilities, and we do not want to risk, uh, employees getting hurt or injured trying to, trying to navigate the weather as well. So, we will keep a watch on that and keep everybody posted. Uh, I, um, I had a question earlier this evening. As you're probably aware, from the last winter storm, we had a number of waterline breaks and challenges. I'm happy to say that all those areas have been addressed. Some of the final touch-ups, if you will, will be made further into the spring, once we have better weather to be able to reseed and do some of those things, but, uh, I want to give a big shout-out to our crews that were out there for several days in just miserable weather, getting everything put back together. We do have, uh, an aging water and sewer system, as do many communities, and that's certainly something on the list as we continue to look into the future that we need to address in terms of making sure that we're making good plans to get those areas, um, addressed as well. We do have a meeting next Tuesday, a work session to talk about, uh, the city's finances as we head into budget season. I know that, um, that has been a topic of concern for a number of months for, for this council, and as I've been on board for the last couple of weeks, I'm still getting my arms around, uh, where things are, and, and more importantly, where do things need to be? And I look forward to spending some time giving an overview next Tuesday of where I see things now, and then as we head into budget season, we'll be talking more about how to move that forward. And Jenny, do you have, um, it's a, it's a segue into the budget. I shared with the council earlier that, um, it's hard for me to believe that it's, it's another budget season. This will be budget season number 35 for me in my career. Um, so, I've done a couple of these over, over the years. This is a very tight timeline. Um, our budget season in Radford is driven by being able to get the real estate tax tickets out in April so that our, uh, or, excuse me, get the tax ticket information together in April so they can be issued in May so that folks have an opportunity to get those back in in June. That results in a lot of meetings in February, March, and April. Had a meeting with the Finance Director today to begin discussion of what needs to be sent out to our department directors. That will be going out to them this Friday. Uh, that's a, that's probably not the most pleasant Valentine's package they'll get, but, uh, it's, it's that time of year. Um, next Tuesday, as I mentioned, we'll be talking about, uh, the budget along with finances in a work session. On Monday, the 24th, which is two weeks from tonight, uh, our auditors from Robinson Farmer Cox will be here, uh, to present, the, the schedule says fiscal year '25. This is the time of year when we're working with '24, '25, and '26, so I typed that wrong. It's the actual fiscal year '24 audit presentation, so they'll be here to share that with us. And then we'll also be talking about fiscal year '26 revenues and just some initial thoughts on that. A number of meetings, uh, as I mentioned earlier, in March and April, those with asterisks or stars beside them are city council meetings. One star is a regularly scheduled meeting. Two stars, I think, March 17th, March 31st, April 7th, and April 21st are all called meetings. So, and, you know, this is the time of year, we get to see each other every Monday night for a while, uh, but we will get through that. Uh, I had a conversation with our department directors last week in terms of looking at the budget for the upcoming year. It's going to be a very austere budget. We want to make sure that we are providing the services we need to provide, but also making sure that we are covering the expenses in the, in the most prudent way possible. So, um, that's pretty much been it. We've, uh, if you've been down through Bissett Park, you may have seen some continued cleanup work down there. We're working hard to get Bissett Park in shape, uh, for the spring. Uh, the ball fields took a tremendous amount of damage. You should see some fencing coming online, hopefully in the next couple of weeks to begin getting those ready for the season. Um, yeah, there will be increased activity there. Jenny has, uh, spent time, uh, in a couple of sessions with FEMA, so we're trying to make sure we've accounted for every penny that we're spending on anything, because if there's an opportunity to get that back, we're going to get it back. That's been about it. You know, for, for a part-time interim gig, it's been really busy, but it's, but it's, I'm enjoying it. The staff here is wonderful, uh, a lot of hard-working folks, a lot of folks behind the scenes that I'm not sure citizens understand every day who all's out there and what they're doing, but there's a lot of good work going on in the community.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for putting the schedule together and going through it this evening. Will you publish this for us and put it out on our social media as well? Because we're, we invite everybody to be part of this process. One of the reasons we wanted to have the discussion next week before we get into the audit is to kind of talk a little bit about where we've been really since the audit would have taken place. So, the audit is a snapshot of, of the previous year and where we were on June 30th. What we're going to be talking about is where we are today, what's happened since July 1st, and, and where we're moving through to kind of set the stage to begin the discussions, and we're rolling up our sleeves doing all of this. Uh, so, thank you very much for all this. Thank you to all the department heads and
Pleasure.
Everybody who's working hard on the budget. Thank you for, uh, everybody that works at the Treasurer's Office and Commissioner of Revenue for their support in helping us understand that. Uh, Council members, do you all have any questions or comment? All right. Thank you, and we do encourage everybody to be a part of this process. Uh, watch the meetings, come to the meetings. It's even better if you come down in person. We're more than happy to have discussions with you, and, uh, we want you to look at the same things we're looking at as we go through this entire process and go from there. Mr. Meadows, do you have anything else for us?
That's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay. Jenny, I was going to ask you if you'll do a couple of things for us. Can you share a, a little bit about, um, the Rave 911 system for the city of Radford?
Yeah. So, um, the city of Radford has an emergency alert system. We use a system through Rave Technologies. We use a system through Rave Technologies, we like to call it Radford Alerts. They, we do emergency alerts through that system. There are also weather alerts you can sign up for through that. Within that, there's also a Smart nine-one-one profile, community profile. We use that, dispatch uses that. You can actually go in and enter your information. They're the only ones that can see it when you call nine-one-one, but it has information such as like if someone's on oxygen in your home or how many pets you have if there's a fire and those kinds of things. When responding to calls, they're knowing what, you know, what to expect and what to respond for. So, we encourage people to sign up for both of those. You can just sign up for one or the other, but if you're going to go sign up for one, you might as well sign up for both. Our weather alerts come through, the National Weather Service through that. And then should there be any emergent information, we use that alert system to send out emergencies.
So, would you mind posting that exact information on our social media? Just here's how to sign up for Radford Alert.
I actually added another, it to our weather announcements today. It's also pinned at the top of our Facebook page. I leave it pinned up there, but I will do another post on that as well and just let people know. We do, just do our closures, you know, on, on websites, on social in that way. And then that sign-up info is also on our social media.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes, sir.
If someone is wondering, oh, did I sign up for that? Is there a way to go somewhere and verify whether you have signed up or not?
Yeah, I believe if you go to the link, it will actually like ask you for your login info and if you try to log in.
The link, what link?
I can email you, I'll email you the link. It's also on our social media.
The link's in the announcement.
I can see if you're signed up for alerts. The Smart nine-one-one profile, I can't see those, but I can see who has signed up for alerts. So, I'm happy to look into that as well. Yeah. Thank you.
You also helped us today share some information about cold and electricity and power bills and all that. Can you talk a little bit about some of that information? And then, Mr. Meadows, I'm going to come back to you just to talk a little bit, because I know a lot of people got their electric bill. It was a particularly cold period and the holidays and a whole lot of things. And we want to make sure that everybody has good information on why that goes that way. So, Jenny, would you share that with us?
Yeah, so, we, we did a release today, probably about midday, just about the electric rates as well as just, we've had some colder-than-normal winter than we're used to in the last few years. So, that might be why you're seeing some higher numbers on your electric bill. Within that release, it has energy efficiency tips and how to sort of check and see if your home is running as efficient as possible regarding energy efficiency. The release also discusses just sort of the, the wholesale power cost adjustment that we've had over the last, I want to say now, two years. So, this year, it was, the average impact was about twenty-five percent per customer. So, that wholesale power cost adjustment is, I think, what a lot of people are seeing on those utility bills and.
And we don't control that. That comes from the wholesale power producer to us that we have to pass along to the customers.
That's a, that's a cost that we incur and then we have to pass along. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a perfect segue, because that's what I wanted to share as well. I think a lot of folks don't realize, you know, Radford has its own electric system and it's not part of the APCO system in terms of the customers of the city, our, our city electric customers, not APCO customers. However, the city of Radford has to buy power on the wholesale market to be able to provide to all our residents and businesses. We have a wholesale power cost that has, as Jenny mentioned, has gone up about twenty-five percent in the last two years. Those wholesale power costs are passed through. That's not added profit or markup on the cities. I mean, that's what we're having to pay and that's what get, that's what gets passed on through. Unfortunately, it seems that, that those are, are always most painful when there's very cold weather and very hot weather. If we have a very hot summer, many times you'll, you'll notice that. I will say that the bills that went out were higher because of the usage in December. The next round of bills that'll be going out have January, and I just want to remind everybody, we had some bitterly cold days in January. So, those, those are going to probably be big bills as well. Again, that is simply the city passing through the cost of what we're having to pay to the wholesale power providers for the power to be able to provide to our customers.
And what, I'll get to you in one quick second. One thing I wanted to mention to folks, and it's always tough when we go through this, and for years, we were reluctant to do anything with the power rates as part of a council to try to hold that cost down for all residents. But, that is one way that we fund about four million dollars of the general fund is through the margin that's made on the city's power supply. That keeps our real estate taxes lower and other rates lower as well. Having said that, one of the pieces that I wanted to toss out there is talk to our billing department about getting on a budget plan. That helps even out the highs and lows so that your bill is a little more regular. You know it's going to be X number of dollars per month. That's not much help right this moment, but it is a way to take control of this for the future so that you don't get that big surprise in January and July or whenever it happens to work with your particular electric bill. And the reason that, that Jenny put out that wonderful press release today is to try to help you in any other way. While we do make money from the electric department that helps fund a lot of the city, we don't want to see anyone have a difficult time being able to pay their bills. We're not looking to run up that cost to create an issue for our citizens. It is simply trying to help you have the best experience possible, use the electric you need to use, and then fund the city things. So, that, that's all I have to say. Seth, did you have something?
Yeah, I also wanted to put it, there, there are being, efforts being made at, on the state level. There's actually a bill in this, in the senate, Bill ten-seventy-six. And then actually, our representative Jason Ballard had, in the house, has a bill, twenty-six-twenty-one, that is looking to cap some of these costs. So, I, one thing I would encourage you is to reach out to your elected officials and make it known, you know, it is a hardship. And hopefully, there's some bipartisan support that, that we desperately need to, to limit some of these costs. But, I did, I did have it in my notes that there are some avenues, it looks like, on the state level in Richmond that are being looked at. And so, reach out to your elected officials as well on the state level and let them know and, you know, and hopefully, we can get some relief that way, too.
All right, thank you. If I can, other comments, yes?
If I can just add to that as well, you know, the city is already looking out into calendar year twenty-twenty-six for purchase power. We have an opportunity to go out on the open market and we think there's going to be opportunities for savings there over what we're doing now. The electric utility industry and market power has been a continually evolving market. It's been very challenging, especially for small electric utility systems like Radford to be out on the open market purchasing power. But, there is, I do believe there's a light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, for some opportunities as we get into twenty-twenty-six. That doesn't make it any easier when the power bill shows up in the mailbox in January and February, but we're keenly aware of that and trying everything we can to address that as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do I understand correctly, also in the billing process, some, some bills are for like twenty-eight days and some bills are for thirty-one? Is that correct?
It is.
So, that can make some difference.
It can. You know, the, we strive, the billing department strives to have bills every month, plus thirty days, plus or minus a day or two. And it's just the way the cycles are read and it also depend, like tomorrow, okay? If it's a snowy nasty day tomorrow, it's hard to be out electronically reading meters. So, that may put them a day or two behind. In April or September, twenty-eight days, thirty-two days, you really don't notice much difference. December, January, July, if it's a couple of days one way or the other, you'll see a difference. And, and, you know, that's not, that's, that's simply a factor of labor being out to be able to read those meters. You know, if it ever goes beyond thirty-two or thirty-three days, then we, we will certainly have a discussion because that's not good. And the opposite end is, you know, I, I worked in a community one time where I'll never forget, the, the readers went out one month and said, you know what? This month, we got it done in twenty-five days. It's like, no, because then everybody thinks their bill's a lot lower and when they get that next bill, it's going to be.
Right.
So, we strive for thirty days, plus or minus, every month on the utility readings. And, it's a good question.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. And, and I do want to point out, you are more than welcome to contact any of us if you have a concern about this. You know, we're trying to explain as much of this here at a public meeting as we possibly can. But, I've talked with a number of residents who are concerned about this and we're trying to help everybody in the best way we can. So, we will go from there and thank you all very much. Seth, what do you have for us this evening?
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank everybody that did come out to share their concerns and do know that, that they are heard. And I appreciate staff and Melissa for working with us to help us get these answers and, and planning, planning commission for, for helping us along in the process. There is a, there is a process so that we make sure we hear everyone's concerns, that we take them into consideration, and then move forward with the decision. So, I just wanted to thank everyone involved, from, from city staff to the people that have come out who have a, have a vested interest in, in this property and then us as well. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for that. I, too, have heard a lot of concerns over the electric rate. So, thank you, Jenny, for being able to get that out for some information. And as I mentioned, there are some efforts being made in Richmond that I'm hoping can combat some of this, that'll, that'll help everyone. Also, I wanted to add that I had a great time at the Chamber Gala. It was, it was good. We, we missed you ladies, but I know you'll be there next year, so, but it was a good time. Thanks to Dan McKinney and the Chamber Board, they do a great job. Congratulations, I think we have a winner in, in the midst of us. Congratulations to Longway and all the winners. There's several very, very worthy businesses and individuals that, that were recognized and it, just congratulations. There was, it was good night, good night, and it was great to celebrate you guys. Craig, you had touched on this a little bit, and I know that you have followed up with us on email. Could you, for the, for the record, kind of tell us a little bit about the Jim Graham Community Garden? I've had people already reaching out because they're really excited and bummed about that. But, I wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of share with the public where we're at.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Gillespie. As I'm sure citizens are, are aware, as we had the historic flooding from Helene at the end of September, created a lot of challenges, caused a lot of damage. One of the areas that were, that was affected was the community garden. There, there was flooding activity that went on there that did some damage. But, also, there were some deposits from the river that created some, some not-so-good soil in that area. And as we have continued to work to remediate all the various issues, that is certainly on a list, but there have been bigger priorities right now to get addressed. So, the decision was made to forego the use of that site for the community garden for this upcoming year. It is on a list, it's something that we'll continue to look at. We haven't even, to my knowledge, we haven't even explored the extent of what that's going to take to remediate that, to be able to use it again. But, we just know that because of the area and how it was polluted and some of the erosion, that it's, it's just not going to be suitable for use this year.
Thank you. And, and you had also kind of touched on this, but I've had a couple vendors and high school coaches and some people, various coaches, even at the rec level, ask for updates on the field and if we were going to be ready for the spring. I've updated them kind of, and I know you have several times as well, but that we'll continue to work with the schools and work with the rec and get that process as far as long as we, we can, is that?
Absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, I believe this evening, there are plans to get fencing back up on the fields within the next couple of weeks. I know that our parks and rec staff have been in communication with the schools in terms of their use. I know that they've also talked to the rec leagues and what is needed there. The priority is getting those fields back to be able to use them. We've also been working in the other areas as well. Unfortunately, at one of the shelters where we had a playground with playground equipment, we've had to remove the playground equipment because most of that was damaged. And even though you can put yellow tape around things, folks still want to climb on the equipment and it's not safe. So, those have been removed. That's another item that we're hoping that we can find a way to get some reimbursement to, to restore. The, the key is to try to get as much as we can back in a usable condition as soon as possible. I will, I will do my best to get a more definitive timeline to be able to share publicly and we can share on social media. But, there are a lot of conversations every week about where we are and where we're headed. So, overall, the news is good, but it is taking a little while. And again, things, you know, weather like we're going to have over the next couple of days just slows it all down as well. But, we'll, we'll get it as quick as we can.
Thank you. I know you guys and the rec staff and partner, and basically all departments have had a, a step in the process. So, thank, thank you everyone for working on that. And then I also encourage everyone to turn in, to tune into our special meeting, our, for our financial update on, on two eighteen as we discuss kind of where we're at and our plans to address it. I encourage everyone to tune into that. And the last thing I'll say is I hope everyone's safe tomorrow with the weather coming in. And just want to go ahead and get ahead of the curve and thank our crews who will be working at all, all hours of the night and all temperatures. And our first responders, police officers, thank you everyone who keeps us safe during weather events and every other day. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Jesse, what do you have for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I dedicated my moment of silence to Sam Lilly. He was the pilot on the American Eagle flight that crashed at Reagan National Airport. He was a good friend of my son who also flies out of Reagan National Airport. They actually got their initial hours after college together. So, not only for those that have passed, but also for those trying to grapple with the tremendous loss. On a positive note, my husband and I adopted two dogs, very excited about that. So, I wanted to just take the opportunity to remind everyone to volunteer, adopt, foster, donate, in whatever capacity you can. There's a great need. And so, certainly, anything that you can do between, again, those four options, maybe there's more, but surely, there's something you can do and there is great need. We adopted through Healing Hearts in Draper, so a shout-out to them for helping us find our new fur babies. I also wanted to just thank the citizens for sharing their concerns. I think what troubles me is in, I guess, almost seven years? I really hate to hear that we have a citizen that's been grappling with ongoing issues and that they really have just come to the point of acceptance. And that bothers me. So, I just want to say again, you know, these are things that, you know, I, prior military, so I would always certainly suggest that you go through the departments that can help rectify or come up with a solution, hopefully, for whatever issue you're facing within the city. But, if you just feel like you need more information, better understanding, additional support, please feel free. I won't just speak for myself, I know all of council feels this way. Let us know because we, we represent you and we're an ambassador for the city and the residents. So, just always let us know. I also had down to thank our first responders. I know we're with a little bit of weather. People stay home, keep warm, be safe if at all possible. Also, the folks that are out there today prepping the road. I was out and about all day and people were very busy preparing for the snow. I'm going to thank the electric department, but I'm also hopeful that we will not need to utilize them. But, in the case that we do, as usual, we appreciate their efforts late at night. Really, I think that's about it, other than just telling everyone to bundle up and please be safe.
Thank you very much. Kelly, what do you have?
Just a, a repeat of everything everybody has said. I've kind of been a little bit low-key the past couple of weeks due to a medical procedure. So, I've just been laying low. I missed the gala, but I did manage to donate some of my hard-earned money to the, the auction thanks to some people that were, that were voting in my stead, so I appreciate that. I do want to announce that I know that we all want to see our downtown a little bit more revitalized. And we do have a current business that is moving into one of the larger spaces, the space beside what used to be the travel center. I'm not sure what that left side was before, but Derek Wagner Dance Studio, where my daughter dances, is going to be moving into that space. So, if you see people down there working and painting and making it shiny and new, that's what's going down there. So, there will be a lot of mothers needing coffee, needing to pick up dinner, reading books, waiting for dance class to be over. So, I'm really excited about that opportunity for our businesses and for our dance studio. And I wish them luck during their competition season. They've doubled in size over the past year, so that's a thriving business that we have here in Radford. So, congratulations to them. And I don't have anything else. Everybody, you know, stay safe. Thank you to everybody for all your hard work and the coming days ahead, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you so much. And I think the space you're talking about is the old Leggett space, right? The department sports store space that was the Bondurant Center.
Yes, it was, the Bondurant, yeah.
That is a great use of the space. I think that's going to be fantastic.
So, you're going to be, I don't know.
It's much larger than it looks like from the front.
It's almost six thousand square feet. It's massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm very excited about that.
Okay, fantastic. Good things happening in Radford. Guy, what do you have?
Well, I'm not going to try to go back through everything everybody else has said. But, I do want to say that it was my first time going to the Chamber Gala and I enjoyed it immensely. And I would like to also congratulate the, the winners of the categories. It was a great time. I met some new people in town that I didn't know. So, I, I did make a bid and got some little something. So, it was a great night and I appreciate what the Chamber does for Radford.
Thank you, sir. And I, I just want to add my congratulations as well. Congratulations to Longway. Congratulations to our Business Person of the Year, Keith Welton's. Our, Longway was our Small Business of the Year. The Business of the Year was BT's. And then the, the nonprofit of the year was Vittles for Vets, which I encourage all of you to learn more about that and all the other organizations that were nominated. Please go to the Chamber's website and learn about the businesses and the people. They're wonderful folks making great things happen here in Radford and around the New River Valley. And we're so appreciative. There were also two very special legacy awards presented. Former Mayor Starnes was able to present a legacy award to David Ridpath, our recently retired city manager for his forty years of service. And an award was presented to Pat Huber, the former president of New River Community College. That actually started here in Radford. Many people don't realize that on Third Avenue was the first location of New River Community College. And so, Radford has deep roots in that organization as well as all the other institutions of higher education here in the New River Valley. So, exciting times. I did want to point out a couple of things as I- As I mentioned, at Glencoe Mansion right now, there's a wonderful exhibition I hope you will go visit and check out, all about the African-American experience following the Civil War through Reconstruction through the early part of the 20th century. I think, you know, Scott Gardner and his team have done a beautiful job. Thank you to the Radford Heritage Foundation and to everybody that was involved with that, as well as the special presentation from the panel that took place here last Wednesday. That was absolutely fantastic, and to hear some of the researched pieces that were shared, but also the personal stories that were shared about the experience here in Radford and the New River Valley and beyond was really incredible. Let's follow those Bobcats and Highlanders. Great things are happening at the high school and at Radford University on the athletic field and in other co-curricular and extracurricular activities, so be sure to check those out. And then March 1st, there is still time where each and every one of us can sign up for the Polar Plunge to support Special Olympics. That is an outstanding opportunity to show our support for those athletes here in Radford in the New River Valley, and it should be a fantastic event. We'll have more information about that in the very near future, but you can sign up today for Polar Plunge Southwest Virginia, New River on the Special Olympics website. And that's all I have right now. So thank you all very much. Thanks to everybody for all their hard work. And with that, we'll say good night. See you next Tuesday.